6:02. Call to order. Any changes to the agenda, team?
I do want to give an update on the project we have Donna working on, the grants project.
Okay, great.
The warrants are, the orders are circulating.
That's just an update that we'll do somewhere.
Yeah.
Warrants are circulating. I think we...
I'd like to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Is there a motion to go into executive session under 1DSA 313?
So moved.
A...
Second.
Three. All right, most of you made a second. Did any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. It is, you're ready to go. Okay, so we're back and we came out of executive session at 6:57.
6:57.
Yeah.
Anything to report?
We have, we have nothing to report. Do... Or we already did our changes to the agenda.
Right.
Warrants have circulated or have circulated.
I'm going to do a grants update at some point.
Okay, let me ask if there are any items of public comment for topics not on the agenda.
Can I make a comment?
I'm looking at the public, no, okay. You have something you want to say?
Yep, I'd like to announce that I am going to run for town clerk. And I hadn't made up my mind until, you know, I saw that Jeremy wasn't running. And I feel like I can help and serve my community in a new role and in a new effort. And I'm going to resign my position as select board at the end of the meeting tonight.
Okay, Denise, thank you.
Thanks for running, Denise.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
So just so you know, Jeremy's, Jeremy has decided, Jeremy Weiss, our current town clerk, has decided not to run again for his office. He's filling out Judy's term, last two years of it.
Right.
It's a three-year position. And so Denise's plan is to run for that office.
Right.
And resign at the same time from the select board.
It's a new three-year term. So it would be 2026, right?
Yep.
So I'm looking forward to working in the office and putting my skills to a new use. It's very exciting.
Learning new things is really exciting.
Things, I won't get Alzheimer's, right?
That's right. All right, Denise, thank you.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Exciting and hard decision.
It's a hard, it was, it was an agonizing decision, an agonizing decision. So, but I've had good support.
Well, now you can move on to the next.
Right, next phase.
Yeah. Okay, so we have, the next item is to ratify the signing of the Lister's Errors and Omissions Report. So this is a document that we, because we had a really tight timeline, we signed it last meeting, even though we didn't warn it. And we are now going to just make the motion to formally accept the report and...
The form.
The form.
Yep.
And make the motion to, I guess make the motion to accept it noting that we've already signed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or conversation?
No.
John?
I'm zoomed.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, and now it is 7:04.
Can I give an update?
Yes, this is, yeah, we have... Wendy's calling at 7:15?
Right, this won't take long.
Yep, go ahead.
You'll remember, we approved Donna to work on the projects of organizing the grants, doing, making a spreadsheet, blah, blah, blah. I met with her today, because I know Rick's been busy, but you are going to have to go in and we're going to have to find a time when you can, maybe some evening even, after work. She started on the project. I'm going to feed her some more information. I need, she's going to call Sandra, she's probably going to talk to Wendy. So she'll, she'll, she'll run with it and she'll do a great job.
That's great, that is great.
Yeah. She's really excited about doing it too, which is great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does she have, like, is, does she have, like, the ECCT grant that I've been pushing buttons for?
We got all that stuff.
All of it's on her radar.
Right, well, as much as I could think of, I'm going through stuff. Some grants may be over and she doesn't need to put them on a spreadsheet.
Right.
But the idea we talked about was, you know, the grant, they always just give you, like, this number of a grant and you got to go five or six pages in to find out what it is. So she's going to start out with the name of the project.
Defining them.
And then the grant number, she'll, you know, she's going to do like a separate tab for highway, separate tab for, like, the CLG, a separate tab for ECCT, so that it's easy to access.
Good, good, good.
And, you know, put in, like, you know, how much it's for, what's the town's match.
Critical deadline points.
Then lines, you know, that kind of stuff, that all makes, I said, you know, just make it, doesn't have to be, you know, really confusing, just keep it as simple as possible.
But with the information you actually...
Right, right. So she's, she's running with it.
That's a really good project.
Yeah.
Organizing, okay, thank you Denise.
Yep.
Okay, so now we need to move on to town meeting. I did not print out the warning, I printed the report.
Well, I...
Did you print out the warning for us?
I got the warning here.
Probably, I did bring my computer.
It's on the...
Did you read Wendy's ones or just one copy?
I didn't, I only brought my copy, because I think it's in the drive.
It's in the folder. I meant to go look and print it out and I forgot.
Yep.
Okay. Turn this on, come on.
And I can't, we got to make, we got to finalize the numbers tonight, as we're going to do. Oh, we need, we need to have the language and this is something that when I, we find, when we get to the point where we want Joe to review it, I can send it to him. And about the reserve fund for the planning commission, the creation.
Right.
And Joe can give us that language and then I'll rewrite. Or we can look back on a previous town report and get the language. I took out, because, hang on, let me, let us, oh, you're not there, okay.
No, no, I had to sign in.
Let's see which...
Where is it? Oh, right, right here. Just make sure, yeah, 1-9, this one right here.
Right here?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's our warning.
And after we got done with our meeting last time, I went in and wrote in the numbers, but I'm not sure that those are right now. Barbara, thank, Barbara, thank you, and Wendy, they double-checked the social services.
Hang on Denise, it's the January 9th version?
Yep.
Draft 1-9, I think that says John's name on it. It's called, so the title, there's several versions of the warning in here.
There's one, there's one that's...
Do you want to go back?
Yeah, go back, because there was one that you could click on that was supposed to be the 9th.
Yeah, this one that says...
It's Calis Warning 2023 Annual Meeting.
Last modified by John, is that the right one?
Oh, it was John.
John Bravant over here.
Well, John might have made an edit, yeah.
Did you, did you make a change in the warning, John?
Today?
No.
No?
You might have, like, deleted...
In the past, I did the section that dealt with the horses.
No, that's, that's not the warning, that's the select board, Rick's word.
Oh, oh, no, I didn't.
Well, you might have deleted a space or something.
Yeah. Okay, so that should be the right one, Rick.
Okay, so, all right, so I got it open now.
Can you, can you open it?
You want to?
Yeah, that's good.
You got it. So, okay, so notably, what we all know from email, but I'll say out loud for anybody who cares, we've talked about, we've talked about the format for town meeting. First, we said, we, we don't have an option to do it virtually, so we're going to do it in person. Then we heard, no, they're fast-tracking legislation to do it virtually. And we heard through Denise that there was some interest in doing it virtually for safety reasons.
Right.
And then we've heard the pendulum has swung back, that there's no way that legislation's going to get through, so we're...
And there's no way it's going to be through town.
It needed to happen by the 15th.
That's what the latest report is.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we are, so it's in person?
It's going to be in person on Tuesday, March 7th, at the Calis Elementary School. At what time, Barbara, 9:30?
9:30 to completion is the way it's been stated in years past.
Okay, and I think...
You better write that down.
When I was in the office today, Barbara noted that, and even Donna said, you know, let's not worry about lunch. And you said that they're not available anyways, right?
I had contacted Historic Kids Corner folks a month or so ago to ask what their plans were, and they could not commit at that time, and it sounded like they were not inclined. This is my perception, that they were not inclined to do that, and I have not gone back to them since then.
Yeah, I think we should just, it's another way to cut down on the crowd, with everybody standing in line, talking, the school has, you know, the gym's pretty big to spread out chairs. Barbara, do you look some of that? Okay, so going through this, so I've added 9:30 to completion, and it's Tuesday, March 7th. I have the new, I have the blanks to fill in for the Article 3. And to update the people that are running. And cemetery budget should be 49.5, not 42.5, on Article 4. Calog Hubbard, we know that amount. Article 6, the total of the special appropriations request is 31,100. We need to create the language and I can look at an old town report for a reserve fund language. The only, I have not calculated when the second, when the tax bill, the dates on the tax bill stuff. So we need to do that. I took out the grace period language, we agreed to take out payments. Right, we agreed to that a couple meetings ago.
We didn't, we didn't vote on it, we listened to the argument.
Do we need to vote on it?
No.
Yeah.
We just need to say out loud.
Yeah, no, I...
To vote, we just said...
Right, so I took that out, because I think we all agreed to that.
So let me just get clear on that. So taxes are due when they're due, end of discussion.
That's right.
Right.
And postmark counts.
Postmark counts, but there's no grace period. Unless somebody could option from before, that we put that back in. You know, there's always that.
We should be prepared to that.
Right. I was trying to look back at the old, some old drafts and see what we had. I think that's, I think that's pretty much it. We have the fire departments, their dollar amounts filled in. And...
And we are expecting a petition from Curtis Pond Association?
Yes, so that will have to go on here too.
Do you want to put a placeholder in here while I'm here?
Yeah, could you put in, I don't know where to, where we want to put it.
Article 17.
Might as well make it Article 17. Oh, you're doing it too?
Nope, I'm just, I'm just...
Yeah.
Coming down here.
And I noticed that on other warnings, we didn't have on there to adjourn, but it seems like it should say that.
Says adjourn.
Yes, because I put it in there.
Oh. Okay.
Yep. When do they have to get us their petition, Barbara? When does Curtis Pond have to get our, get the petition?
They, they have to have a valid petition to the town clerk by the 19th.
By the 19th, oh, okay.
That's for warning articles.
Okay, that's for articles, running for offices the 30th.
It's the 30th.
Right. Barbara did a great job last night explaining all the different, she got it down, she got it down.
So I, so...
Okay, you need to explain, Barbara did a great job explaining what, where.
Explaining all the different positions, the fire... Oh, where did we, there was a meeting last night at the Maple Corner Community Center that was open to the public and I went. And it was all about, you know, vacant positions. And Barbara did a great job explaining about when you have to have a petition filed. If there's an error, they're due on the 30th, but if there's an error, they find out the next day, because the town clerk has to check to make sure the signatures are actually valid, registered voters in Calis, correct? And then they have until...
Then they have another additional 24 hours after that to cure their petition.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
So, so the bottom submission is the 30th. The town clerk has to know by the 31st if their petition and other paperwork is acceptable or not. We have the 24 hours of February 1st, is the absolute, because then the ballots go to print on February 2nd.
Right, and Barbara was, you know, explained about the consent form, about the petition, how many signatures you have to get, so she, she's got it down.
Well, and I'm glad to hear that, because I was assuming, but also wondering, whether the Curtis Pond folks are, like, overrunning their signatures, I would assume.
They're trying to.
I would assume so.
Yeah, they're trying to.
That's a safe thing to do.
They're veterans, yeah.
Barbara wants to come in.
May I add something?
Uh huh.
So the town office has also prepared a meet the candidates form, no, it's not really a form, it's a memo to candidates, asking them to provide a 250-word statement as to why you're running, why they want to hold that office, what contributions they could make to it, and a headshot. And we're going to compile all of that and print it out.
Really?
Hard copy, have it distributed at the four corners around Calis.
Oh, God.
Post it to Park Forest Forum and on voter site. So it'll be the opportunity for voters to meet the candidates in their own words.
All right, and then are we going to include our personal email addresses in case somebody wants to contact?
However you want to, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Nice.
And phone number.
Yeah, because in recent elections, the town office has got a lot of phone calls saying, who are these people on the ballot, I don't even know them, so we're going to try to fix that.
That's great.
Great, great.
And if they see the face, they'll know when they see them. I've seen that person around town.
Right.
So this will be the opportunity to try to encourage people to vote for them.
Yeah, that's great.
So Wendy should be contacting us any minute. So are we good on the warning if I go back and fill in some of this stuff?
And then we're going to...
And then we'll have to, we'll have to vote on it on our meeting on the 23rd, because Curtis Pond Dam Association petition, that's their deadline, so...
Okay. And we have to finalize our numbers with Wendy's help.
Right, right.
I need to get this away from me.
Looking like we're going to have them.
I know, exactly what I said, and I've had two children. Somebody else's turn.
Oh, I got it. And Barbara's here. Okay, and then, and so once we finalize the figures with Wendy...
Can I just say something about that?
Yeah.
So we voted on the budget and the other night, a week ago?
Yeah, it was a...
Tuesday night.
Regular meeting, no, it was a regular meeting.
Was it Monday that we voted on the budget? Okay. And then...
There she is, right on time.
We made, we made some changes that we thought weren't going to affect the overall numbers, but when Wendy, when we said it to Wendy...
Hi Wendy.
We got back from her, was slightly different than what we thought.
Were we there, Wendy?
Formally approved, so...
I am.
Oh, good.
Wendy, thank you.
Thank you.
So Wendy, Wendy Wilton is here. Wendy works for Nemrick and has been contracted with us to support us performing some treasure function. Wendy, thank you. And you've been the, the strong, the mastermind behind getting our proposed budget together. And I was just explaining that even though we voted on it last week, when you sent it back, it had some... And we're working on a Excel spreadsheet with, like, cell formulas, so no surprise that Wendy's fine-toothed comb, sharp pencil, found some discrepancy. And I asked her to join us to, or Denise asked her, we both did too, to explain why her bottom line was 20,000 less, right, than ours.
Okay.
That's why you're here.
Yep.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Wendy.
But just that Sharon just sent you a little spreadsheet about debt analysis.
Okay.
And it was really easy to find this out. The bottom line is the budget that I sent you on the 11th is correct.
And the differences, and the differences, okay, here's the email.
So you should have, for your budget approval, your general fund should be $581,987.
Now, did you, Wendy, did you send the email to all of us?
Just to me. So let me...
The differences between the two spreadsheets I sent just to you.
Yep, I'm going to send it to everybody right now.
Okay, we can talk about that in a second, but I want to make sure you guys know what the accurate number is far first. So if you need a motion to cover what happened on the 9th, you know what they are.
That's not the right one.
Okay, so general fund is 581,987.
January 10th. Wait a minute, which point, we're, we're...
And your highway is 983,102.
Okay, wait a minute, can you, can you...
Give us a second, Wendy, we're trying to play catch-up. Sharon's emailing something to us, so it's going to stand.
I did, I had sent.
Okay, so what is the...
There it is.
What is the total general fund and highway fund figure? Okay, that's what I had.
Uh huh, and that's what you have in what I sent you Denise, in the articles.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I have.
So I just, I think I sent to everybody today the final budget I sent to the designer, and those are the same numbers that are on there.
And the differences arise because...
I can explain.
Okay, wait a minute, before you do that, can we just go back to the amount that has to be raised by taxes and non-tax revenue to make sure I have those numbers right?
Um, hang on just one second. My update, which was after the meeting on the 10th.
Yeah.
So the total between the, the general fund, the highway, and the warrant articles is 1.956,645. So that's 1,956,645. Our estimated non-tax revenues are 319,717, so 319,717 dollars.
Yep.
The net amount to raise the taxes is 1,636,928. 1,636,928 dollars.
28. Okay, and not the... So the overall budget that we're approving is 1,956,645 dollars. And that is comprised of, I think when we voted it last week, we...
Well, you are approving a budget with the articles, are you?
No, because those get voted on.
Correct, you're approving 1,555,089.
089 or 90?
Um, I think I rounded it, oh, it was 90. I think what I gave you, I know that's a mistake, it wasn't the final.
You're, you're right, we approve, we approve the...
And that's what we approved on the...
Last week, and we, when we approved it, Wendy, so, yeah, so I didn't write down the... What we need so we can revote is the general fund number...
Plus highway, right?
The highway number and the general, and the combined, because I think when we voted the whole thing, we mentioned the subpieces.
Okay, so, yeah, so we need the, the voters show...
That's where I brought you on a start, because I can explain those differences primarily, they are three things. When you passed the numbers on the 9th, I hadn't had a chance to recalculate the shift of the benefits in the payroll tax from general funds to highway for the DPW director. And in that spreadsheet I sent you, I showed exactly what you wanted to see, okay? It went from one fund to another fund, all good.
But that doesn't affect the bottom line.
Right, that doesn't affect the bottom line. On the 10th, I told you that the server loans is, it will be completely paid off this April.
Right.
So it doesn't even impact this, this 24th. So that's a little over $6,000.
Okay, and so we, we heard that...
And the question you had in front of you on the 9th, had your cemetery in at...
It was in at 42.5 and it's 49.5.
No, it was...
I'd said 62.5.
62, you think you had...
Yeah.
62.5.
Because if you have the 20,000, if you have 42.5, baby budget for cemetery, plus 20,000, it's missing.
Right, and it's back down to the 49.5.
And that is 13,000. So if you add 13 plus 6,300 and change, you have your 19,000 difference.
So that's where the diff, that's where the difference was.
Right.
I thought we'd taken out the server, but I guess we hadn't. Okay, so, all right, so that, so give us the three numbers, give...
Okay.
Okay, wait a minute.
Sharon, have the three numbers in the spreadsheet.
They're right.
Just now, take, open it up, take a look at it, I'll guide you. If you've all got it, I'll guide you.
Oh, I have...
Total highway, right, 983,102, right?
Okay, no, well, yeah, but it doesn't get, it doesn't get broken down in that way for the warning.
Well, the warning is general fund and highway fund together.
Right, but what we voted on last week was, it was like this, we said, we recommend, we make a motion to recommend to the voters, or something like that, of to, a combined budget of general fund and highway of 1,565,090 dollars, comprised of a highway budget of 983,102 dollars and a general fund budget of 581,987 dollars.
Correct.
That's the motion.
That's correct, and if you look at the spreadsheet showing the difference between Sharon's spreadsheet and my update, which is the final.
Yep.
You'll see all those numbers there, you'll see total general fund.
Yep.
Second, the bottom of the number.
Yep, and that's...
Highway and total general fund and highway.
And that's where, that's where I just read them from.
Yeah, 581,987, general, highway, 983,102.
And they combine to, do you have that number Denise, 1565090?
15, yeah, I got that.
Okay, so is there a motion to present to the voters a budget of 1,565,090 dollars? Actually, why don't we first, hang on, stop. Is there a motion, a motion to rescind the vote from last week on that budget?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. John, Rick, to rescind last week's vote.
Budget vote.
Yep. Unless somebody think we're giving them two votes, two budgets.
Right, okay.
All right, now, is there a motion to approve an overall town budget, i.e. general fund and highway, of 1,565,090 dollars comprised of general fund budget 581,987 and highway budget of 983,102?
So, second.
Okay, any questions, Denise got it?
Rick.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so that is done. And then, okay, but, okay, now for the warning, we need to know... Okay, we got the total budget, 1,565,090. Of which, what amount shall be raised by taxes and what is non-tax revenue? Do we, do you, was that on this spreadsheet, Wendy?
Of which, I wrote that down when Wendy said it, of which 1,636,928 is raised by taxes. Do we have to vote on that too?
No, we just have to vote, when we do the warning, we'll vote.
Have to get it right.
We have to get it right.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute, there's two, there's two different raised by taxes things here. The one that I just filled out with you was the, was what it looked like if all the articles you're voting on. But I think your Article 3 really focuses on general fund and highway.
Right, yeah, it absolutely does.
And Denise, I sent you the wording on that.
Yes, somewhere.
Yep.
Yep, I'll find it.
Because I went down through the articles.
Yep, you checked it all.
And I sent it as a draft to you with the cemetery budget and stuff.
Okay.
So I think you have it, but if you never search me, let me take a look.
Hang on, I think Denise, that we...
Oh, I see it, I see it for the warning, I've got it right here in the email that I printed out.[1790.15] So the amount raised by taxes for general fund and highway is the difference between those two, which is one million two hundred forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-two.
Yeah, that's the number I had from last week.
Yeah.
Somehow, and I, and I think that, I think I got that from what you had sent me.
Yeah, she sent it on the tenth, and then when I looked at it over the weekend, I was confused, which is why we're...
And I'll scan it right now and send it to you all by email.
Yeah, okay, so I had the, I had the right numbers, that's good.
Yep.
Okay.
Because in our calculation for the total tax rate, we took the total, including the articles, right, should be voted on...
Right, we have...
Reduced that by the three nineteen, three hundred nineteen thousand to come up with a tax rate estimate.
Right, 'cause the, the spread...
Once your article just on your general fund and highway budget spending reduced by the revenue...
Right.
And the other was an estimated tax rate, if everything gets voted on.
Right, yeah, I have that spreadsheet. Hang on, hang on, let me, let me get clear on this. The article reads, shall the voters approve total general fund and highway fund...
Expenditures.
Of, that's the number we just...
That's the one five six five zero nine zero.
That we just voted on, right?
Right.
And then, of which, one million two forty-five three seventy-two shall be raised by taxes, and three nineteen seven one seven, non-tax revenue.
What was the one that needs to be raised by taxes?
One, two four five, three seventy-two. And that's the difference between, the three nineteen seven nine, seven seventeen is the difference between the total to be raised by taxes and the, and the total combined budget.
I fucked it up.
No, you didn't.
Okay, there we go.
We must figure it out, you're just not...
Okay, is there, are we good on that? So we just, so we just approved the numbers that are here, and that are in the warning.
And the overall is...
The overall?
Uh, well, the increase, so the increase over last year is, the overall increase is about six...
Six percent.
Is it exactly six percent, or is it, the one, the night, the one from the ninth was five, five point seven?
I can actually take a look based on...
This, this is, this says, this says six point five.
With my update, the actual increase in your general fund and highway is five point seven, five hundred and up to six. So it's five point seven.
Okay, so, so, okay, so that answers one of my questions in earlier email, is that, that, that twenty thousand difference doesn't make a, a difference in... It doesn't change, five point, mine was also five point...
The only, the only change you had on your general fund and highway really was dropping off the server...
Right, 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 right.
Six grand and change.
Right, so, so the percentage difference is still five point seven, which is what we said last week. We're going up five point seven.
In your, um, in your spreadsheet, Sharon, you had a difference of seven percent, but when we took out the server, it dropped it down to six, okay?
Right.
Five point seven, you know, pretty close.
Right, um, okay, and so, just for, just for fun, when I was doing all, looking at all this yesterday, I went out to see if the Bureau of Labor Statistics had posted the CPI for December, and they have.
Oh, they have.
Yeah, it was, so we were working from end of November, which I'm not suggesting we should change, of six point four. That's the rolling twelve month ending in November, and that's where we got our number to budget.
For the budget, yeah.
You know, just to be aware of what increases are, and our, so the end of the year, December number was six point one. So either way, we're coming in at five point seven, so we actually are slightly under CPI, for whatever that's worth to the people out there.
Well, the other thing to make note of too, is that the total budget, the budget for, um, general fund, highway, plus the warrant articles, because you reduce your, um, cemetery by twenty grand.
They, they did, they, that, we are giving them their request.
Right.
Yeah, no, I know, I said you, I mean the town.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, the total on the one million nine hundred fifty-six thousand budget between general fund, highway, and the articles actually is increasing by four percent. So the overall impact, because I'm assuming the voters are gonna vote for all of the articles...
Right, so if it wasn't...
If it ends here, four percent increase.
Yeah, so, if the, if none, if it wasn't for the special articles, cemetery, library, all those, the budget increase would be four point three percent.
No, the opposite, if, if, if you weren't even thinking about the special articles and the cemetery, it would be five point seven. But because, thank you Cemetery Commission, they had a one-time expense last year that they're taking out.
Right, the, the expense.
And so that knocks the, when you add them in...
Right.
This year, it tells, um, a different, an even better story.
Yeah, and I did double-check with Juanita, to make sure that we got the right figure, that they, and she said yes.
Yeah, that's what they want, that's great, that's great, that's everybody doing their part, like, okay, we got what we needed last year, we don't need to come back again.
Right.
Great, perfect. All right, so...
Even though their base budget for the cemetery went up for twenty-four, because they didn't have that twenty thousand in, it's a reduction of thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, now, did you send, does the printer have what they need to format?
I'm just gonna ask, ask if I can ask a question.
Yeah, sure.
So, hey Wendy, it's Barbara.
Hey Barbara.
I thi, I think what I understand, would you please confirm that all the financial files that you sent to the graphic designer were correct, right?
Correct, yep, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, we just, we, our vote, our vote did not support them.
Okay.
Now it does.
Right.
Okay.
Do we vote, do we vote, we never voted, right?
Yeah, we did vote, we did vote.
Did we say, say aye, I thought we...
Aye, aye, Rick. Aye, aye.
All right, so where are we?
On the, in the report.
Okay, so we've done the, we did the warning, we're gonna vote on that next week. Uh, we understand the numbers and why they changed from our vote last week. Wendy, I think, are we done with Wendy?
Yeah, we're done.
Wendy, thank you.
I think you are, right?
Yeah. Wendy, are you coming in the office this week?
Uh, I'd like to, um, I just have to figure out which day, based on, uh, the schedule.
Okay.
And, um, I would like to come in at eight thirty-two.
Okay.
And ten ninety-nine.
Oh, yes, ten ninety-nine, it's ten ninety-nine season. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
You guys are on your way.
Thanks, Wendy.
Love you, Wendy.
Can I give you, love you, Wendy, yes.
All of you guys, all right, take care, have a good day.
Bye.
Bye, bye.
Okay, report, there's paper here, if people want it, it's in the folder. I, I think we've all, except, yeah, we've all, pretty much all touched it.
Mm-hmm.
We have an opening section that says, you know, blah blah, um, no, I should be more articulate than that.
We just need to remember to take, oh, we gotta send it to Barbara, so I'm sure she'll read it.
I, I want to, as long, I'm assuming everybody who's been in has kind of read it. Here's a couple of things that I left flagged to, we obviously, I have to update the numbers, and I will do that, and the pie. Yeah, um, let me open my electronic version of it. I wanted to talk about... Denise, did you look at the, well, actually, well, let's get there, so...
Bye Barbara, thank you.
Bye Barbara, thanks a lot. Um, we anticipate that next week we will, so we, when we approve the generators, um, we, Shade Tree and something else.
Well, the Shade Tree plan, and the, the generator coming, the, the generators coming from ARPA.
Oh, that's right, I gotta fill in that amount, I will do that.
And the fifteen thousand to the Conservation Commission to fund work on invasive species, that's how I just...
Yeah, we need to do that, the invasives, and Shade Tree. But let's wait for John to get back, so everybody's on the same page here.
And I, I thought it was important to put in the increases that we gave over last year.
I agree with that, but I want, that's one of the things I wanted to talk about, and let's, John will have an opinion too, so let's just wait.
I don't care how they word it, I just want...
Yeah, I know, no, but here's, so Denise, I, so, the topic is this bullet, approved and increased cost of living for the following employees and elected officials. I, I struck that one line as approved by the voters, because we always say that we reserve the right, of course, to recognize that what we're doing is making a budget. We are not, right, we actually ran into that with one person this year. The voters approved an increase, and you didn't give it to me, you, that's absolutely correct, and we don't have to, and we're not going to.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
So how do we change that line?
We just struck that line. We just take out that wording, it's no big deal.
Yeah, I just wondered if anybody felt strongly about it.
Oh, I see, I see.
No, I just wanted...
They were granted the increase, but it wasn't by...
Not by the voters.
As approved by select...
No, the, the voters approved the budget, the select board has the ability to give the increase up to what was budgeted or not.
Right, so we approved an increase, and we just leave it there. And, and we wanted to list the crew, I'm ambivalent about that, but people...
It's public knowledge.
Yeah, that's...
Public information.
Well, and actually, it gives them a place to say, oh, that's who our crew is.
Yeah.
Um, and, okay, so we'll make that one change there. And then, John, we were starting to talk about earlier, under this second bullet?
ARPA.
The ARPA funds, so, we anticipate that next week we will, so we, when we approve the generators, um, we, that Nick was here to talk about, we...
I've got the figures at home.
Yeah, we talked about, so, so, we talked about, who, who pays for them, and then we have to do a town match?
It's, um, is it, it's federal money, it's federal money that's come to the state.
It's a FEMA, it comes through FEMA, and we have to do a match, and there was a conversation that night about, oh, we could even match it from ARPA. But we didn't vote it that way.
No, we didn't vote, right.
So, so, we thought, well, do we wanna vote it that way, so that we're, it was like sixteen thousand or so?
Yeah, it was something like that, I've got it, I didn't bring it tonight.
But this is, this is the sense of the group, because we need to finalize this report in anticipation of a vote next week.
Right, so we need to put that figure in.
And we need to make sure everybody's gonna be okay with that next week, and not have this update that we're not gonna vote for. And then, the other thing is, um, when we were developing the budget... Yeah, when, when we were developing the budget, Conservation Commission had requested fifteen thousand to work on invasive species. And we said, hey, hang on, we can, um, take that from ARPA, and so that's something we can formally vote on next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we can put it in the report.
We can put it in the report, I just wanna make sure that everybody is inclined to vote, yes. Um, and then the third thing is the Shade Tree plan, that we haven't voted, but we have an email from Neil, that he and Dan have worked out their differences. Do we have a new one, or did they just...
He was gonna send it to us, I don't know that he ever did, I'll bug him, because...
Yeah.
Um, we need the new plan, because we need to post it.
Right, um, okay, so then, um, I questioned, Denise says we did it, we increased roadside mowing to three times a year? Did we actually mow three times this year? Does everybody think we did?
No, we got, I can't answer that right.
I think we, I know we increased it.
I know we did, yeah.
How about, we don't have to say, we don't have to say the number, we can just say increase.
Beyond twice a year.
Increased roadside mowing.
Yeah, just say that.
Period, to help.
Which, where's that bullet?
Hmm, bottom of page three.
Well, I know they were still mowing in the fall.
They were.
Dana was mowing.
Yeah.
No, that's a good thing.
Yeah, we can just say, we can just say...
Why don't we say increased roadside mowing from spring to fall?
From spring to fall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hang on, I'm just gonna go in and make these changes right now.
You are, okay.
Yeah, that works well for us. Okay, increased roadside mowing from spring to fall to help reduce, I will remove the comments. Um, okay, and then, what else did we wanna talk about?
Technology, I read technology sounded good.
Okay, I, yeah, so it sounded like...
It's fine.
It's fine, reasonably accurate, so it's very, very largely redundant to last year, but...
Not, not a lot has changed, you know, other than we are, I think, somewhere, I think I put in about the technology fund. Oh, it might have been in the bullets.
It's, no, it's in there, with voter approval, select board established a technology fund, it might have been in there last year too, I don't...
No, I, I put that in today.
Um, and then, emergency services, has somebody read that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Sounds okay.
I read it, I just didn't know if there was more we could say.
I don't think there is.
Oh, I added that bit about, we, we, uh, hope to establish a program for honorariums, for Calis residents, blah blah.
Okay, see, using the word honorariums.
Yeah, I put that in, um, okay, I'm gonna take out that note, that this piece, the roads piece came from Rick.
Yeah, I just, I just cleaned it up a little bit.
Mentions the crew, I think that's great, John wrote a section about...
Legal issues.
Our legal issues.
Yeah, looks good.
Yeah, that was a good one too.
And then, we are thanking everybody...
And signing off.
And saying that we are here for you.
We are always here for them, always. So I think it looks good.
Oh, Barbara Butler left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I went to the bathroom, she left.
She kept going to the bathroom, she was good.
She was gone.
All right, so we're in good shape on this, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're good. We just need to take out the draft at the bottom.
Well, I need to update numbers on the pie, which is quick. There is FYI, everybody, I moved it up from last year, just because we're all still gonna be around. Um, there is a pie chart spreadsheet that's in the folder, that has a different tab for every year, and all you have to do is update numbers. Just FYI, if you have, maybe you wanna borrow it for something else you have, you do in your world.
So you change the numbers, and the thing adjusts automatically?
Yes.
How do you do that?
That's very clever.
Not there, in the spreadsheet, you have to do it in Excel.
Oh, oh, I see, I see, I see, yes, I need a lesson on all this.
Oh, yeah, that's great for them.
It's a great function, okay, so are we ready to pass, um, I will accept a motion to approve the select board report with the minor tweaks left to do that Sharon and Denise will make.
So moved.
Awesome, there we go.
So this is the SB report, um, who seconded it?
John.
John.
I thought you did, okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You guys were getting stuff done. Uh, okay, what else do we have to do? Review select board timeline, items in that line.
No, we're done.
We're done?
We're done.
We missed Barbara's deadline, not by a little bit, but yay.
I think she'll forgive us.
Sorry, Barbara.
I'm sure, I think she'll forgive us.
She seems forgiving, I'm happy about that. It's, it's, it feels good to have moved through this, and this, I actually feel good about this, a couple weeks ago I didn't, now I do. Um, okay, so, I think we need to go back into executive, oh, wait, no, before we do, there's one thing, I should have made this update earlier. I got an email from Stephanie today, so, let me just remind everyone. Stephanie Kaplan, yes, Chair of the Conservation Commission. It's been carried, not on this version, I asked Denise, you know, let's take off all that tail, because we gotta go through and clean it all up. But it's been on here, that the Conservation Commission was working on the curb cut ordinance, and they actually were.
Oh, good.
Yep, and she met with Joe McNeil, McLean.
McLean, Joe McLean, our attorney?
Yes.
McLean.
Yes, there's another attorney, and...
There is another attorney, McNeil or something.
And he said, it happens all the time, um, so she connected with Joe to figure out what of what they wanted to propose is actually statutorily acceptable in the context of court, of curb cut ordinance. So the concept, and I love this, is they want... I got an email from Stephanie today, so let me just remind everybody. Stephanie Kaplan, yes, Chair of the Conservation Commission. It's been carried, not on this version, I asked Denise, you know, let's take off all that tail, because we got to go through and clean it all up, but it's been on here that the Conservation Commission was working on the curb cut ordinance, and they actually were.
Oh, good.
Yep, and she met with Joe McNeil, McLean.
McLean, Joe McLean, our attorney.
Yes, yes, there's another attorney and...
There is another attorney, McNeil or something.
And he said, it happens all the time, um, so she connected with Joe to figure out what of what they wanted to propose is actually statutorily acceptable in the context of court, of curb cut ordinance, so the concept, and I love this, is they want to, it's what we always wanted, you know, integrating our road stuff with our environmental stewardship, and so they have taken the lead, Conservation Commission. Reviewing the, this was when we had that curb cut ordinance that we were going to update with a form, et cetera, and Stephanie said, hang on, we have some ideas, so she's been working on it, the group has, um, and Joe has gone through it with her around what is, you know, legally acceptable to build in through quote curb cut ordinance, so she wants to bring to this board a proposal from the...
CC?
The Conservation Commission, so I just want to put that out there because...
She going to do it on the twenty, on the twenty-third?
I don't know, I haven't even, I got this at like, you know, four thirty, or four, five thirty.
Okay.
So I haven't even said, you know, what's your time, because we're, you know, but she knows what she's asking, she's asking for a really quick turnaround. But I want to make you aware, because I think that's exciting. It's exciting, and...
Very good, good for them.
And they did all the work. All right, so there's, I just wanted to mention that to you guys. Okay, so then, we need a motion, is it, does anybody else have news to share?
No.
No?
Can you forward any minutes for us?
I'd be happy to. Yeah, no, I, I got it like literally as I was printing the stuff for tonight. Um, so, and I don't have the document, she just put it on my radar that they're going to want to come.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, um, okay, so we need a motion to go back into executive session.
Do we, do we need to, oh, not yet.
We're going, so, um, I would like a motion to go into executive session to, um, to discuss, um, the appointment of a public officer or employee under one VSA three one three eight three.
Wait, what time is it?
It is seven fifty-one.
Seven fifty-one?
And it should be, should be brief, right?
It should be brief, yeah.
So Jeremy should stick around.
Should be brief if you want.
Oh, Jeremy, sorry.
Jerome.
Jerome, one of those Jerries.
Which one are we going in under?
One, appointment of a public officer.
One VSA...
Three one three eight three. Did we get a motion?
Yeah.
Rick, Rick, did you second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Is there anything to report for the minutes?
Uh, Jerome, do you have your camera on? Okay, so, um, we went into executive session to, under one...
And we came out.
Eight three, we came out at seven fifty-five. And we wanted to ask Denise whether she was willing to be appointed to serve in her vacancy, uh, which begins, the vacancy begins tonight with your announcement earlier, and Denise said that she is willing to serve until an election can be held. An election can be held and will be held, um, actually in March, so that's a great opportunity for somebody to be elected to finish out Denise's term, which is one more year of a three-year term. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And Denise, thank you, I think this, I love this model where people who are, are transitioning out, plan well and allow us to appoint them, because the voters have already selected you to serve. And that spares us the, both the work and the drama and the politics of appointing somebody, creating what I refer to as a bias of incumbency, and then the, all of the question around when should an election be held, should we, you know, in my prior, they considered holding an election even before March...
Wow.
To fill, um, the mayor's seat and the council seat. So people take that opportunity for the public to elect really seriously, and I think, um, this is good, this is good that you're willing to serve.
Thank you.
And, so I think we need a motion to appoint Denise to serve in the vacancy.
I will proudly move that.
Thank you.
That would be through the end of town meeting, twenty twenty-three.
Until whenever that happens.
Until, until the election can be...
Somebody new is sworn in, I guess.
Yeah.
Properly sworn.
And I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay, so is there a second on John's motion?
It's a motion to, to appoint Denise into the position she just vacated tonight, and she will remain in that position as an appointee until a new individual is elected into that position, or at very least the end of town meeting if no one's elected.
That's right.
And then there's, we don't know.
Right.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a second, uh, any other discussion or comments? Denise, thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and Denise, you'll let the record reflect that you...
And just for clarification, um, this, the select board has done this twice before.
Stained, yeah.
The last couple of weeks, I guess, uh, when both myself and, both I and Mark Mahaly, two select board members resigned their spots in the midst of their term, um, and so we were re, both reappointed by the select, were appointed by the select board with the same premise and...
To serve in the vacancy.
Serve in the vacancy.
And we will, um, post the vacancy, um, so that everybody is aware of this opportunity to run.
Barbara's also going to be posting.
She'll post it?
She's posting, she's going to repost everything and...
We just need to make sure it's...
And it's, and it's, this is going to be included.
Okay.
In what she posts on front porch.
I, Jim had that form to use, I don't know if it matters, remember when we had to do this when Judy resigned?
Oh.
There was a special form, like it's supposed to hang up in the town office and whatever.
Is that the ten day thing, we have to do it within ten days?
We have to announce the vacancy within ten days.
So we could...
And we are allowed to appoint before we've announced the vacancy. The purpose of announcing the vacancy is, is that somebody can run in the election.
All right. All right, thank you guys, I appreciate it, appreciate your vote.
Thank you Denise.
Thank you for your vote of confidence.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited for you, I feel excited for you.
Thank you.
It's a great, it's an exciting development. Thank you. All right, I think our meeting is adjourned, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would move the, be adjourned.
Is it, is it like eight oh three or something?
Eight oh two.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, straight up.
I do want to do it in my second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, awesome.